Good evening. My name is Nick Sturgeon, President of Speedway Town Council. It is September 8th, 2025 at 7:00 PM. I call this meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll continue with introductions. To my far right is Town Manager Grant Kleinheinz.
Good evening.
Councilor Sarah Gardner is not here this evening with the previous engagement, but to my immediate right is Town Councilor Sean Harold.
Good evening.
To the far left is Town Attorney Ted Nolting.
Good evening.
Next to him is Town Clerk Treasurer Philip Faust.
Good evening.
Next to him is Councilor Ben Snoblet.
Good evening.
And to my immediate left is Vice President of the Council, Jason Delisle.
Good evening.
All right, item two, minutes, approval of minutes for the August 25th, 2025 meeting.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any comments, questions, discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor to approve, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes for zero. Item three, memorandum, approval of memorandum of administrative session of the Speedway Town Council on August 25th, 2025.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Any comments, questions, discussion? Hearing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor to approve, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes for zero. Item four, memorandum, approval of a memorandum of joint planning session of the Speedway Town Council and Redevelopment Commission on August 26th, 2025.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Any comments, questions, discussion? Hearing none, I will call for a vote. All of those in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes for zero. Item five, approval of project and marketing agreement with Brilliant Marketing. Grant?
Yes, so this is my only item on the agenda this evening. So, as you know, we have reached out to a couple of different consultants over the past year or so. Brilliant Marketing, Jeremy Brilliant and his wife, they had a really good, I think, pitch to us. We've had a discussion with them. We would like to hire them with this agreement for a period of one year with compensation the amount of not to exceed $8,500 if we have them work on the five projects that are identified in the Appendix A, which include the Willshaw, utility rate discussions, media training, on-call crisis communications. They will work with myself, Kyle Markley, Cheryl McElroy, and the council on those things. We think this will be a good arrangement. We've not had anybody since Laura Beck left about a year ago. So, we recommend approval of this agreement, and I believe it has nobody's name on it for signature, so I think either the council president can do it, or I can do it, either one. I'll answer any questions you might have.
Is there a motion?
I will make a motion for the approval of project and marketing agreement with Brilliant Marketing.
A second.
Any comments, question, discussion? I will just add that Jeremy reached out to me, and I've known Jeremy for a couple of years. We met through a cybersecurity meeting at the National Guard Headquarters a few years ago, and we were just catching up and brought this to me, and I thought this was a good idea. There was one little thing that happened a few weeks ago that I won't re-bring up here that kind of sparked that re-engagement for crisis communication. So, thought that it would be a good idea. We love Cheryl. She does great work for us. Thought having that additional help would just make us better in how we communicate things out to the public. Any other comments, questions, discussion? All right, hearing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes for zero. All right, moving on to our budget ordinances for tonight, so bear with us here as we get through the next four items. Ordinance 1413, approval of 2026 budget for the Civil Town of Speedway, first reading. Philip?
Thank you, yes. This is the first of four ordinances that we'll go through this evening. This is for the town's budget, and I thought I would give a brief overview before we open our public hearing. Bill and Brian, if you could put up the first slide for us. So, this is one of the charts that we kind of go through each year usually. So, you can see our budget, and these are select funds, so I pull out the pensions and some of the things that aren't really fully within our control. So, you can see we have gone up steadily since 2021, and then we were able to do some reductions in our 2025 budget, and then we have this increase in 2026, largely attributable to payroll increases is a significant part of that, and largely attributable payroll increases for police and fire. So, what this does not include, several things. It doesn't include the redevelopment commission, doesn't include the utilities. So, this is like our general fund, our streets, parks, things like that, the major funds that you see there on the ordinance there. If you can go to the next slide, please. I like this chart because I think, as we've talked about multiple times, a budget, among other things, is an expression of your priorities. And so, within the main town budget, I think we've clearly shown over the years that our public safety budgets are high priorities for the town, and that continues this year as well. I think the council's already aware of this, but just for the public's benefit, the budgets coming together before you are the product of many man-hours between the department heads, Grant, our financial advisor, our state DLGF rep. So, there's a lot of people that put a lot of time and effort into this, so do want to thank them for that. For the public's benefit, this was, a notice was provided at the end of August, and this is my, at least, annual reminder to everyone who wants to be an informed citizen that they can go to budgetnotices.in.gov, and there you can sign up for, not just for us, but for all the taxing units that apply to you. So, if you want to be informed about budget activities before they happen, then you can set yourself up for email reminders there, or check it periodically. We will be hopefully having our public hearing today, which was noticed properly and is going to be 10 days before our anticipated adoption hearing, so we're in compliance with the law there. Happy to answer, try to answer any questions the council might have, but would like to remind you to open it for a public hearing, please.
Any questions before I open it up? All right, it is 7:09, and I will open the public hearing for ordinance 1430. Is there anybody who'd like to speak on this ordinance? All right, hearing none, I will close this public hearing at 7:09. All right, moving on to item seven, ordinance 1414, approval of the 2026 budget for the school town of Speedway, our first hearing, our first reading.
So, this is the budget ordinance for the school corporation. We are, I guess I can't say unique, but we are rare among towns and cities in Indiana in that we are not only responsible for the direct town budget, but the town council is also the fiscal body for the school corporation, the library, and the Public Transportation Board as well. So, Superintendent Kyle Trebly and her treasurer Nancy Johnson have a very professional team, and they put together strong budgets that don't usually require a lot of work for me, so they spend a lot of man-hours on that and put together a polished product for us. So, the council had more info from them at the budget workshops that we did, and there have not been many changes since then, maybe one tweak to a projected or noticed tax rate that had to do with the bonds. This was properly noticed at the end of August again so that we comply with the law. We will hopefully have a public hearing today that will then again be 10 days before our adoption hearing on the 22nd. And I would ask you to open a public hearing.
Any questions before I open the hearing? All right, it is 7:11, and I will open up the public hearing for ordinance 1414. Anybody who'd like to address, comment on this ordinance? Hearing none, I will go ahead and close the public hearing at 7:11. Item eight, ordinance 1415, approval of the 2026 budget for the Speedway Public Library, first reading.
Yes, I'd like to thank Library Director Darcy Boer, who I see in the audience today. Came despite a recent injury, so I appreciate your making the trip here. Darcy and her consultant from Baker Tilly presented to the council during the budget workshop, and they, again, do most of the heavy lifting with regards to their budget, but it does come before the council to approve it. We did post-public notice for it at the end of August in compliance with the law. Hopefully, we'll have a public hearing today that will then be 10 days before an adoption hearing on the 22nd. And as the council may remember, one of the biggest items for the library is the anticipated HVAC overhaul that we have coming up. So, I would ask you to open a public hearing, please.
Any comments from the council before? All right, it is 7:13, and I'll call the public hearing for ordinance 1415, open. Anybody who'd like to come up to speak? Hearing none, I will close the public hearing for ordinance 1415. And item number nine, ordinance 1416, approval of 2026 budget for Speedway Public Transportation, first reading.
So, the Public Transportation Board handles our contract with Indigo for the buses, as well as capital improvement projects and other projects that help support that system. Dean Butts is their treasurer, who has done an excellent job the last two years and has, again, done the heavy lifting on this budget. We noticed it appropriately at the end of August. Have a public hearing today, which will be 10 days before the adoption hearing on the 22nd. I will note that the Public Transportation Board has the honor of being the only one of our four budgets this year that did do a slight decrease in their budget, so kudos to them. But I would ask for a public hearing to be opened.
Any comments from the council? Okay, I will go ahead and open the public hearing for ordinance 1416 at 7:14. Anybody who'd like to speak? Hearing none, I will call the public hearing closed at 7:14. All right, item 10, approval of engagement letter with Baker Tilly Advisory Group LP for services related to a wastewater rate study and financial plan for various capital improvements at the wastewater treatment plant. Philip?
Thank you. I am recommending that you approve this engagement letter. This is for the project that you and the public have heard about repeatedly and will continue to hear about repeatedly for probably the next year or so. This is for our combined sewer overflow remediation project at the sewer plant itself. Estimates for that are anywhere from the $15 to $20 million price tag. Baker Tilly is a well-respected financial advisor, particularly in the utility sphere, and so I would like to enlist their help in analyzing our rate structure for the sewer plant to see what, if any, changes are going to be needed to accomplish that rather large capital improvement project. They would also help us with bond issuance, other financial applications and reporting.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Any comments or questions for Philip? Hearing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes for zero. All right, item 11, approval of claims and utility adjustments. Philip?
Thank you. I do have requests for both this evening. The claims and adjustments span the time period of August 21st through September 3rd. The claims are on 10 pages, in total $1,194,297.31. The adjustments are on four pages for 10 customers, and again, I would ask for your approval of both.
I'll make a motion to approve the claims and utility adjustments.
I'll second.
Any comments, questions, discussion? Hearing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes for zero. All right, moving right along. Reports from department supervisors, starting with Communication. Cheryl?
Good evening, council. Just going to remind folks of a few events coming up in the next four weeks. As far as I know, these are the last two movie on mains for this year. We have one tomorrow night, Tuesday, September 9th, that begins at 6:00 PM. We're doing it indoors at PRI. It's Ford versus Ferrari. Still kind of the same thing. It's a free movie. Bring your chairs if you can be comfortable. Otherwise, there'll be business chairs available. Folks can sit in. Yeah, come out and check out the show. The next one is also this week. It's on Friday, September 12th, also begins at 6:00 PM. This one is also at PRI. It's presented by Bell Helmets. It's Gran Turismo. Saturday, September 13th, we are doing a ribbon cutting at the new Smoothie King that's located on Crawfordsville Road next to Jimmy John's. 12:00 noon will be the ceremony beginning, excuse me. I do know they're working on some additional activities that will be fun for the community to check out. Also, on Saturday, September 13th, we have the Jazz on Main presented by the Chamber of Commerce. It begins at 7:00 PM and ends at 9:00 PM. It will be at the Plaza. Thursday, September 18th, is the IMSA Street Fest by IMS. It will begin at 5:00 PM, ends at 8:00 PM. Will be on Main Street from 13th to 16th Street. Road and parking closures will begin about 1:00, and reminders will be sent out again on that to businesses and to residents. On Thursday, October 2nd, is the Taste of Speedway by the Chamber of Commerce. It will be at DeLara, beginning at 5:00 PM, ends at 7:00 PM. Tickets are $20, and you can purchase them in advance at B. Aaron Designs, or I believe there's an event link for that on the chamber's website. And finally, the Speedway Hometown Parade is scheduled for Friday, October 3rd, beginning at 5:00 PM. If we have rain or bad weather, the rain day is the following day, October 4th, also at 5:00 PM. That's it.
All right, any questions for Cheryl? All right, thank you.
Thank you, Cheryl.
Thanks, Cheryl.
Pardon me?
Thank you.
Oh, you're welcome.
All right, next up is Economic Development. Kyle?
Evening. Thank you, councilors. Not a lot to report. Roundabout is going very well, though. We hope by the mid-month, we'll be doing a mock of the limestone veneers and the caps, and then after we get approval on the mock from all the interested parties, we'll move and finish installing those limestones. We're still, we're kind of more back on schedule rather than being ahead, just because of trying to get supplies and all that to us. Nothing to be worried about, though. We're looking good. Main Street redesign is going well, still in contacts with the designer. We're still on schedule there. We're still in negotiations with a potential buyer for 5630 Crawfordsville. Hopefully, by end of this week, we'll have something more concrete. And then we do, we're getting ready to send out the RFP for the 16th Street corridor study. We hope, high level, subject to change, hope to have that out by mid to late October. We'll get under contract by end of year with a contractor, and then we hope to go from January 5th to about mid-September to have that study completed. We wanted to try and get it done by September to turn around and apply to the IMPO for construction grants in October.
All right, any questions for Kyle?
Yeah, I've got a question for you. I've got a lot of questions in terms of 16th Street, just residents wanting to know what's happening, you know, what do they mean by a study?
Sure.
What are the possible changes that could take place? You know, where's it start? Where's it stop? You know, we're not putting any roundabouts in or anything like that, or it's just typical questions, you know?
We might, if it turns out to be the better option for that area, we could. I'm not sure, looking at 16th Street, where we would, but if the study does come back and it would show that a roundabout would be more efficient, that's something we could think about. A lot of this study has to do with making sure that, you know, the amount of road that we have, do we need to do any particular road diet? Do we need to add bike lanes, multimodal paths? Do we have enough wastewater sewers so we're not getting floods? Are we good with the, like, heat index coming off of the streets? Do we need to add more, you know, shaded trees along there? Do we need to look at diagonal parking in certain areas? This is going to be a pretty comprehensive study, so we also need to look at where we think new developments are going to be happening. We've got the new TIFF at 16th and Lundhurst. If a new development goes in there, what infrastructure do we need to be able to accommodate that? Of course, that depends on what goes in, but if we do a pretty good-sized development, we're going to need pretty good size of infrastructure for it. The study will go from 16th and Main Street all the way down to 16th and Mickley, and through that, we'll be asking residences at certain times. I'm sure we'll hold a couple of public meetings to get their input. We'll be talking with businesses, stakeholders, and obviously council and commissioners on what they want to see happen. Study's going to give us a lot of options. We can do this, we can do that, we can do this, and then we're going to have to hone in on what's realistic. What can we financially do? What makes sense, and what's best for the town? So, it is going to be a long process. There is a lot that goes into it, but overall, this will be setting us up for future developments and just better traffic flow, safety.
Anything else? All right, thanks, Kyle.
Thank you.
Next up, please, Chief Upchurch.
Evening, council. I gotta wear the glasses, sorry. This past week, the two deputy chiefs and myself attended the U.S. Attorney General's Conference here in Indianapolis. There were about 300 law enforcement officials there from local, state, and federal agencies. We covered topics of drones, gangs, immigration enforcement, just to name a few. And the best part was it's free, so it doesn't cost us anything. So, a lot of good topics that we covered. Also, I'd like to inform the council that tomorrow we'll be extending an offer, a conditional offer of employment to our newest officer. He still has to undergo the physical and psychological testing, but the conditional officer comes first. So, hopefully we'll get him, if everything goes as planned, probably mid-November, and try to get him in the academy in January. So, and I don't want to steal any Tammy's thunder here, but we look forward to participating in the Public Safety Service Community Day this Thursday. It is Leonard Park, right?
Leonard.
Leonard Park, 5 to 7. Stop by. We'll be cooking hot dogs, chips, drinks, and we'll have, I'm sure the fire department will have some of their equipment and gear out. We'll have ours out, so it's supposed to be a nice night, so please stop by. And I will end with thus far this year, our calls for service. We've responded to 17,949, and we've issued 3,944 traffic citations. So, that's all I have.
Any questions? The one question I saw that you guys got the MRAP.
Yes.
How's things going with that as far as?
It's going well. Right now, they're working on the, putting the new lettering and trying to get that to work. So, because of the materials on there, they're going to put the wrap on there just to change it over from Maryville to Speedway. So, we'd like to have our name on it.
You're going to bring that out?
We don't, it's, I don't know if we're going to get it to this event, just because if we do, it's going to say Maryville Police Department.
Gift wrap it.
We're trying, and we will, if we don't get it to this one, we hope to get it to the next one. So, but that's going well, too. So, thank you.
Perfect. Thanks, Steve. And fire is not here, so we will skip on down to parks and recreation. Tammy?
Hello. Well, we wrapped up our summer 2025 concerts in market. It was a really good year, and fun fact, this was our 14th year for having summer concerts in Speedway. And this year's concerts were made possible by the generous donations from Speedway Lions Club, Wesler Engineering, Alliance Insurance, Funday's Ice Cream and Sweets, Jennifer and Curtis Miller Family, and Orthodontic Experts. So, we do appreciate them being sponsors. Many of them are dedicated sponsors every year, and we hope they come back next year. And then, as Chief said, this Thursday is the Speedway Public Safety and Service Community Day. It is 5 to 7. The Speedway Library has sponsored the Foam Cannon again, so the kids can come and have fun with the foam. The weather does look amazing, so hopefully a lot of people will come out and enjoy the day with us. Funday's is donating some tubs of ice cream again, and I'm sure Grant will be out getting his arm fired up, ready for some scooping.
One for me and one for them.
Right. And then, looking ahead, in October, we've got trunk-or-treat coming up, so I'll start sending information out about that. If there's any local businesses, organizations that want to participate and have a vehicle that they want to decorate in that event, they can contact me by email at tsmith@speedwayin.gov, and we'll get them signed up to participate. And I'll leave it at that, unless you have any questions.
Any questions for Tammy? All right, thank you. Last, but certainly not least, Public Works, Rob?
Good evening, council. We'll start off with wastewater. They treated 120 million gallons of water in August. The concrete pad was poured for their generator. They're waiting on it to cure so the generator can actually be installed for the energy-saving project that's ongoing. Work's still ongoing for the overflow tanks that we're still working on as well, and grounds, maintenance and maintenance on the plant ongoing as usual. Water Works treated 68 million gallons of water. They have ongoing maintenance also, and they replaced a hydrant at the wastewater plant as well, and a couple of water main breaks that they've taken care of. So, we got that. And then, street department, manhole lining project started last week, should finish up tomorrow, hopefully, or Wednesday. Sanitary sewer cleaning's ongoing. We have the pedestrian project going on Crawfordville Road, 25th Street project going on, so pretty busy. That's all I have.
Any questions for Rob?
That's been beautiful weather.
It has been.
Yeah.
Good construction weather.
Yeah, no kids.
Yeah, but both should be completed by Thanksgiving.
Yeah.
We're hoping.
Yep.
Because. Fingers crossed that we don't get a lot of bad rain.
Yeah, October, you never know what you're going to get in October. Could be rain for two or three days in a row, and it'd be pretty tough to do any type of work in that, but take advantage of the good days we do have. So that's all I have.
All right. Thanks, Rob. All right. Moving on, Town Manager Report.
Great. Just a couple of items to piggyback on what Rob said. 25th Street, today, we held the, basically on the northern lanes or the westbound lanes, right, Rob? I'm getting that right? Yeah. The proof roll for the base, a majority of it passed. We do have a couple of areas where we will be doing some excavation, extra rock, and what is called geo-fabric as well. That will cost us a little bit, but not as much as a full chemical treatment, which is a good thing. So that project, as Rob mentioned, is on schedule and should be done around Thanksgiving. Weather cooperating, I want to make that point. It is important to know that the detours have been posted on our website. You can download those maps. We remind people that driving up and down 25th Street might be hazardous to your car. It is noted to not travel on it unless you live on that area. We've had a lot of people driving up and down, a lot of people moving barricades and barrels, so we're asking people, please don't do that. Please respect that it's a closed road. I know it's inconvenient, but it's going to ultimately cause damage to your car, potentially damage to the project, and delay what is going on. We have looked into a couple of things. I know traffic on Meadowwood has picked up. We'll have a discussion with the police department about that. We've also looked into somehow modifying the signal at Parkwood and 25th. That's not going as well as I think we would, we would like that, but that project's moving forward. Crawfordsville Road pedestrian is also moving forward. The only other comment that I have is I want to thank all of our department heads and all of our town staff. We've actually done a heck of a lot this year. I think we've made a lot of progress in a lot of different areas. The capital improvement projects that we've done, things like the manhole lining, that's something the average resident will never experience until they don't have an issue because we've lined those things. So we're being proactive about our maintenance. We're trying to make sure we're putting capital dollars where they make the most sense. And I also appreciate the council's efforts. I know you guys get bombarded with a lot of information daily, weekly, bi-monthly in our meetings. Appreciate your willingness to roll your sleeves up and get into the weeds of it. It's always good to see councils be very involved, and you guys have been very involved. Very much appreciate that. So I don't have anything else. I am done for this evening.
I got one question for Grant.
Yeah.
On a trash pickup on 25th Street, what's the procedure on that? Is it still normal?
I'm going to defer to Rob.
It is still normal. We have staff from Waste Management in honor of progress meetings every two weeks, so they're aware of what areas are closed. The contractor, the barrels can't be reached by their truck, are brought down to the truck and then taken back by their staff, so there's not been any interruption as far as pickup for trash service.
And as far as the library, since it's?
The library, we got the lane in there, and if we have to move the dumpsters, we're going to put them out in the grass on that lane that you enter the fire department on. We can get them in the grass, so the truck could probably even drive over the driveway that we put in and get to them on-site if they can get through that, make that turn. And then we don't even have to move them, they can stay there, but that's up to the driver to, if he feels safe.
So the public is still, has access to?
Correct. Library. Correct, yeah. Yep. Their entrance is open on the backside of the firehouse, so they can enter through there. You don't even have to go on 25th Street at all. If they choose to take 25th Street, it's still open that way, but I would say use the alternate route in the back. It's safer, less dirt to deal with or dust, and less likelihood of anything happening.
Great. Thank you, Rob.
Any other questions for Grant? All right. Moving on to councillor reports. Sean.
So just two things. One, I just wanted to say a big thank you to Philip, Grant, all the department heads on the budget meeting preparation and everything that you guys went through to get those together. It's not lost on me how much work that is to get it organized and in a digestible format, so thank you for everything you guys did to prepare for that. And the only other thing I wanted to call out, obviously we had opening day at the new stadium a couple of weeks ago. Hopefully, many of you in the community were able to come to ribbon cutting. I think that was?
The Wednesday.
The Wednesday before. And if not then, hopefully you're able to come out on that Friday night. And we do have another home game this Friday. If you've not had a chance to see it, it's something that I think we can really be proud of as a town. And yeah, really hope everyone gets out and enjoys it. And yeah, and thank you to the team that did all the planning for that. You can see that, like I said, it's something that we should all be very proud of in the town and all enjoy, so.
That's it? All right. Thanks. Vince?
I'll just second what Sean said. It is a massive amount of work that's done here to make sure our town budget is appropriate. You know, and a lot of it is forecasting, you know, just, you know, are we going to get the income that we thought we were going to get? And as far as expenditures, it's just like anything else in this world, that are going up, not down. And so it's difficult to maintain high level of service. You know, I had to go off to our police and fire for doing the job for public safety and especially our street department and all of our departments out there providing a lot of manpower services from that standpoint. That's all I got for right now. Thank you.
Thanks, Vince. Jason?
Nothing for me tonight.
All right. Well, and again, just echo Sean and Vince's statement on the new football stadium. Was able to get there for the ribbon cutting and the first football game, which was packed. I don't think I've ever seen that parking lot as full as it was. Great facility. I know Dr. Trebley and all of the school board and everybody on the admin side did just a wonderful job getting it done. And now, we just continue to support our teams that are doing amazing things, both at the junior high and high school. So with that said, it is 7:37. I will call this meeting adjourned. Thank you.